Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Murray?
Good evening, Ms. Johnson, Superintendent Green, members of the board. It's my privilege tonight to introduce Ms. Tylinn McGlaughlin, eighth grader at Powell Middle School. Tylinn is accompanied tonight by her mother, Ms. Lavelle McGlaughlin, and also by the Assistant Principal, Mr. Crump, who is representing Ms. McGinnis. Tylinn McGlaughlin is a member of the National Honor Society. She's a member of the Principal's Student Advisory Committee and the Student Council. She's an honor roll student, a proficient and advanced scholar. Her future aspirations is to become a female astrophysicist for NASA. Her favorite quote is one that I found to be kind of intriguing. It says, "Never ruin a good day by thinking about a bad yesterday." So help me welcome Ms. Tyler McGlaughlin.
May you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tylinn, for leading the pledge for us this evening. Your mom is here. We're going to ask her to stand. Thank you for all you do for our students in the district. Now we have words of encouragement by Rihanna Russell. Rihanna Russell is honored to be the daughter of Ronald and Janine Russell. She's a graduating senior at Jim Hill High School, where she currently holds the title of Miss Jim Hill. She is not only an international baccalaureate student, but also a proud member of the student government. Rihanna also participates in the Drama Club, is a member of Anderson United Methodist Church, captain of Jim Hill's volleyball team, and plays power forward for the Varsity Lady Tigers. She has worked for the past five years as a tutor for young kids. She credits her grandmother with inspiring her love for learning and values the constant reminder to do the right thing because it is the right thing to do. Rihanna plans to attend Jackson State University on a full academic scholarship, majoring in business with an emphasis in finance. Her ultimate goal is to manage several businesses in Jackson, Mississippi, giving back to the community that molded her. She lives by the quote, "When God grants you favor, nothing is impossible."
Good evening, Superintendent Green, School Board President Ms. Johnson, the school board members and audience. I am Miss Jim Hill, Rihanna Russell. Vince Lombard once said, "Leaders are made, they are not born." They are made by hard effort, which is the price which all of us must pay to achieve any goal that is worthwhile. Because of the hard work of so many great teachers, supportive staff, and productive principals, I've been an active compassionate and lifelong learner. My classmates and I are prepared to make exceptional contributions in life. So on behalf of the students of Jackson Public Schools, thank you for making us inquiry enough to develop our natural curiosity, knowledgeable enough to develop an understanding across a wide range of disciplines. Thinkers who critically and gravely recognize and approach complex problems and make reasoned ethical decisions. Communicators who understand and express ideas and information confidently and gravely in more than one language. Principal enough to act with integrity and honesty. Open-minded to the perspectives, values, and traditions of other individuals and communities. Caring enough to make a positive difference to the lives of others. Risk-takers and brave. And articulate enough to defend our beliefs. Balance enough to participate in a wide range of extracurricular activities as well as focus on academic development. And reflective enough to give thoughtful consideration to our own learning and experience. Thank you for making us just enough to make an enormous difference.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, for your words of encouragement. Ms. Russell, do you have family here with you? Would you please have them stand? Thank you. Board, we have all members present, and therefore we have a quorum. So the next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays, there being none. The motion is approved unanimously. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've also had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for December 3, 2019?
That's so moved.
Second?
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays, there being none. The motion is approved unanimously. Now the moment we've all been waiting for, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Attorney Shepherd, Attorney Johnson, boss. President Johnson, board members, to those who are here with us this evening. As we typically do, we have a video presentation at this time with some information that we'd like to update you with. And so I will ask my colleagues to begin that tape.
Jackson Public Schools recently released a plan to redesign the district schools. The three-year plan will redesign schools throughout the district. The restructuring plan will expand the district's pre-kindergarten offerings, support the development of a world-class teaching and learning center, generate cost savings that pave the way for long-term strategic investments, increase equity, and support district-wide academic excellence. The plan, titled "Optimizing for Equity", builds upon the district's five-year strategic action plan. Please visit our website to learn more about this proposal and listen in to Dr. Eric Green tonight. Four Mura High School students have been named Academic All-Americans by the National Speech and Debate Association. The four seniors are Jeffrey Colito, Maisie Brown, Abigail Showalter, and Evan Morrissey. The scholars were recognized for their competitive excellence in speech and debate, academic success in the classroom, and outstanding leadership and service. To qualify, students must hold a National Speech and Debate Association degree of superior distinction or higher within the Honor Society, demonstrate outstanding character and leadership, and have earned a GPA of 3.7 or higher throughout their high school career. Let's give it up for these mighty Mustangs. Thanks to PetSmart and Progressive Missionary Baptist Church, the students at Johnson Elementary School will have an extra gift under their tree this holiday season. PetSmart and Pastor Arthur Sutton of Progressive Missionary Baptist Church partnered to donate 500 teddy bears and 100 coats and jackets to the children. The lucky scholars were surprised and appreciative for the toys and the new coats that were right on time for this winter season. Thank you, Progressive Missionary Baptist Church and PetSmart, for this generous contribution. The Jackson Public School District announced winners of the 2019 JPS Reading Fair. JPS held district-wide reading fairs for elementary students in grades pre-K through fifth and for secondary-level students in sixth through 12th grades. The purpose of the district's reading fairs is to provide scholars in grades K through 12 the opportunity to share their favorite books through a storyboard or multimedia display. The goal of the reading fair is to enhance and encourage reading at all grade levels and to allow students to collaborate with their peers. To see a list of all of our winners listed by division, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. The Jackson Public School District will host an employee convocation on Monday, January 6, 2020, to kick off the second semester of the 2019-2020 school year. The event will begin at 8:30 a.m. at the Mississippi Coliseum, located at 1207 Mississippi Street in Jackson. The theme for the event is "Ain't No Stoppin' Us Now, We're On the Move." Attendance is required of all JPS staff. All employees should contact their immediate supervisors for more information. The JPS winter break begins with a 60% day at all JPS schools on Friday, December 20, with noon dismissal for elementary, 12:30 for middle schools, and 1:30 for high schools. All JPS schools and offices will be closed December 23 through January 3 for the winter break. Teachers and staff return on Monday, January 6, and students return on Tuesday, January 7. For the latest information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us and connect with us on Twitter, Facebook, and our YouTube channel.
Thank you, as always, to our team for producing that video. Really appreciate the work that goes into that and curating those stories and those headlines and news bites there. Youth Leadership Greater Jackson, of Greater Jackson. The Youth Leadership Jackson Program is a community-wide leadership program for high school sophomores and juniors. This program increases their awareness through leadership training, community-oriented seminars, and interaction with adult leaders who model exemplary citizenship and service to the community. At this time, I'll ask Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lakeisha Marshall-Thomas to join us and share a bit more about Youth Leadership Jackson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
At this time, I will call the names of the 16 scholars that will be participating in Youth Leadership Jackson for the 1920 school year, as well as I'll ask Ms. Tanya Harrison where to come up and give an overview of the program and the experiences and activities that the students will be participating in for this school year. So our students are Essence Byrd, a student at Jim Hill High School. And I'll just ask you all to stand up front so that you can be recognized as well. Zion Davis attends Michelle Obama Early College High School. Aleah Edwards, Jim Hill High School. Marion Keys-Green, Lanier High School. Akayla Greer, Lanier High School. Jordan Hall, Michelle Obama Early College High School. Jada Henderson, Lanier High School. Dolores Jackson, Michelle Obama High School. Jada Kelly, Jim Hill. Frances Lewis, Forest Hill. Peavia Miles, Jim Hill. Olusake Olabege, Jim Hill High School. Brianna Morris Sherman, Lanier High School. Felicia Sheriff, Mura High School. Demetri Stratten, Lanier High School. And Jaden Weller, Mura High School. So at this time, we will ask Ms. Ware to come and give an overview of what our students will be experiencing this school year.
Good afternoon. I'm Tanya Ware with Leadership Greater Jackson and the Youth Leadership Jackson Program. I'm super excited to be here. I'm so excited about these guys. Give them another big hand. So it was sad because after our December class with Dr. Luckett, I thought I was not going to see you guys until January, but here you are. So I'm excited to be here. Youth Leadership Jackson is more than 30 years old, and it's a program that is really on the front lines at the grassroots levels, really developing young leaders for the city of Jackson and the metro area. We have students that have been taking this program now for more than 30 years. And I just released a class outline to the board so you can see. But they will study everything from cultural diversity in America to the justice system, law and politics, social responsibility, quality of life, as well as information on healthcare and a host of other topics. One of the most important things that I've found even with my own children is that it's really important that the leader in them is developed very early in life so that they can really prosper and do things in their community that will really be impactful. My daughter was saying, "I'm going to go to New York University, New York University forever and ever." Then she took the Youth Leadership Jackson program last year. Now she wants to stay in Jackson and go to school. So I'm super excited about that. And I think the biggest testimony of this program is that it takes the scholars that are already leading, and it helps to develop their skills and really set them on a path to really do something significant in this world. I do believe that we have what we need in Jackson to win. We just have to cultivate it. And so I'm excited to be a part of that. And thank you for this opportunity to share.
Dr. Green and President Johnson, if I might take a moment of privilege. I had the great opportunity to spend the opening retreat weekend with those young people, leading them in that cultural diversity workshop. And our leadership is in this district in very good hands, and I am very proud of the representation this year. And Youth Leadership Jackson, a program that I did go through more than 30 years ago.
Awesome. So very proud, and thanks again to all of the adults who have been leading and shepherding and supporting these young folks as they continue to develop their leadership skills. Board members, as you know, in July, we launched a five-year strategic plan that outlines our core values and commitments to transform scholars' lives through excellent education. Additionally, we pledged to take the necessary steps and actions to promote change and to move JPS into the next phase of transformation. We're not only building on our strengths as an organization, but we have been intentional towards creating opportunities for our scholars to be successful. Dr. Michael Cormack, our Chief of Staff, will join us now to provide an update on the overall progress towards the goals and commitments introduced in our strategic plan, Excellence for All. Dr. Cormack?
Thank you. Good evening to Board President Johnson, to Dr. Green and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm excited to share with you some updates on the implementation of our strategic plan, Excellence for All. So as Dr. Green mentioned, on July 18 of this last year, our district launched its five-year strategic plan, Excellence for All. And as part of that plan, Dr. Green included a call of action, a call to action to all of us, and several key components, which we'll mention. Our six core values, which were launched after community sessions in every ward of the city. Our five-year goals and metrics. Five key commitments, and we call them commitments because we wanted this strategic plan to be a living document, not simply live on a shelf to collect dust or to be pretty and glossy, but to really animate the work that we do in the district. And then finally, the profile of a JPS graduate, of which our young people who were just before us really live into that document, specifically the call to civic participation, which we are lifting as a district. So as part of our strategic plan and the implementation of the plan, we have elected five commitment champions to champion the work for moving forward. Dr. William Merritt is leading the work for Commitment One, a strong start, which focuses on an intentional design to build out pre-kindergarten access for every four-year-old in Jackson. Dr. Kim Yana Burke, who leads our Office of Teaching and Learning for Innovative Teaching and Learning, of which will speak to each of the commitments this evening. Myself, I'm leading the work around our talented and empowered teams. The Human Resources Team is one of the key departments reporting to the Chief of Staff. And our excellent executive director, Ms. Lyons, Sandra Lyons, Stephanie Nelson, and also Dr. Tommy Knowles, who serves as our district recruiter, helped to lead out with the work regarding to talented and empowered teams. Our Commitment Four is Joyful Learning Environments, and that's led by Ms. Amanda Thomas, who serves as our Executive Director of Climate and Wellness. And finally, and last but not least, our Accountability and Excellence Commitment, which is led by Dr. Nicole Evans of Data and Accountability. This evening, I want to speak briefly to the progress that has been made to date in implementing Excellence for All and describe our next steps in planning, data collection, and phasing the work that's related to each of the commitments. So I begin with our milestones and measurements. We thought it very important in this plan to lay out some very specific targets for where we'd like to be by 2024, with that five-year goal spread in mind. Our first goal is all scholars having access to a high-quality JPS pre-kindergarten experience. That is Commitment One in a nutshell. And so we've set benchmark targets that were based on the school year 1718. At that time, 580 seats were available for pre-kindergarten in the district. This year, we were able to expand one additional classroom section, providing available access for 600 scholars. And our goal for end of year is 780 seats. This evening, Dr. Green will amplify this particular commitment in our optimizing-for-equity proposal, which has the capacity to double our current seats based on the benchmark year. So should the board move forward with approval of optimizing-for-equity, we could double pre-kindergarten access in the district. Our second goal focuses on 40% or more scholars performing proficiently in reading in grades 3 through 8 and in English 2. In 1718, approximately a quarter of our students had met that threshold. We saw positive gains last year on the MAP, the state assessment. And our goal for the end of year is for at least 30%. So we are looking and setting realistic, but then also some goals that we believe, based on prior growth in the district in those numbers, that we can accomplish. And our current status on that goal is that we are on track based on our benchmark results that were reported. 40% or more scholars performing proficiently in mathematics is another of the goals. In 1718, about 20% or 1 in 5 of our students had met that marker. We saw about a 4% increase on that based on last year's MAP results. And we've set a target for this year at 27%. And again, based on our benchmark results, we are on track. Related to ACT performance, we set an improvement goal. And we cite our sights on 21, which over the course of this five-year plan would have us increasing by at least a point each year. We set that 21 goal because that is a benchmark for being prepared for college without remediation. We think that that's an important marker and milestone for our district. In 1718, 15.6, or I'm sorry, the composite score was 15.6. We saw a bit of slippage last year and at a 15. Our goal for end of year is a 17, and we're presently off track. But one of the things that we are looking to do and build, obviously, a composite ACT score is a lift. But we are working in our middle schools to introduce each of our eighth graders to a pre-ACT format so that they can become more familiar and acclimated. They'll get, they receive a composite score. In fact, I have an eighth grader who went through that exercise, and it's been helpful to have conversations about what we will do at home and also at school to make certain that she and other scholars are well-prepared when the time comes and they are juniors in high school. But we're thinking earlier, at an earlier clip, to prepare that trajectory of scholars for stronger performance on the ACT. 80% or more of our scholars is another important goal for graduation milestone. And 1718, 71% of our scholars attained graduation in four years. Last year, we saw great growth with 74.5% of scholars attaining that milestone. And graduation for us is a lagging indicator, and so we are actually on track. Our next graduating cohort will be at the 75%, and that's a reference to last year's cohort. And we believe this current cohort will be on track to attain the 76% or better. We've also set two goals connected to suspensions and to chronic absenteeism to be able to support the ABCs, the attendance, behavior, and course performance goals. And so 10% or fewer JPS scholars suspended is an important goal in tracking behavior. In 1718, about 20% of our students were suspended over the course of the year. That grew last year to nearly 24%. We've set a very ambitious goal for this end of year at 12%. But we are presently on track with about 8%, as you heard from Ms. Amanda Thomas, that have been suspended so far this year at the middle point of this year. So we're hopeful that with continued support for principals, leaderships, and teachers, that we will be able to attain that 12% marker of 12% or fewer students suspended. And then finally, with chronic absenteeism, we've set a marker of no more than 20% of JPS scholars who are defined as chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of the instructional day and/or of the instructional time. And so that includes all absences. Those are excused, unexcused, and suspensions. And so we want no more than 20% of scholars at that clip. 22% in 1718, a decrease last year, and a goal of 20%. We want to be above this marker and believe that with some great work, we can continue to maintain our on-track status here. So the layout of each of our strategic plan commitments is as follows. We have an implementation plan and grid that lays out the phasing of the work. One of the things that we wanted to be able to do is, because these are commitments, we wanted to be able to speak in a very coherent way to when community members, when teachers, when all of our stakeholders could expect the key initiatives to be lifted and to be accomplished. And so you can see with this particular phasing guide, implementation guide, each of the key initiatives listed. And the yellow or the P on the chart refers to things that we are currently in the planning phase. The I's represent those things that we are implementing currently. And the R stands for constant refinement. Those things that, once implemented, we would look to refine over time. And so this year, we are in Commitment One, in the planning phase for two key initiatives, and in implementation phase for Three. All of this with the goal of setting realistic targets over the trajectory of the five-year plan. So, a strong start, a focus on pre-kindergarten and expanding access for all four-year-olds. Our optimizing plan, as I mentioned, endeavors to expand JPS pre-kindergarten access at Van Winkle and McWillie Elementary Schools. The combined total would offer access to an additional 580 pre-kindergarten scholars next year, should it be implemented. And then Dr. Merritt and our team has convened early childhood partners to align on sharing resources. An additional collaboration is underway with our Heinz County Human Resource Agency, our chief Head Start partner. Additionally, connected to Commitment Two, Innovative Teaching and Learning, as part of our optimizing plan, we have focused on repurposing Rowan as a center for teaching and learning, a world-class district-wide center for teaching and learning. We've also lifted the work of adopting new curriculum standards or new curricular programs in K-5 for English Language Arts. Our program is Wit and Wisdom. And then Ready Math is our K through 8 math adoption. Additionally, one of the things that we heard in the One Voice canvassing report and the Better Together Commission was a focus on assessment and also looking at the quantity and quality of assessment in the district. And so that is another key priority in our work, and specifically, meeting our obligations connected to the CAP. So making certain that we provide the professional development and training to our personnel to make certain that they can act in accord with our district testing policy. Connected to Commitment Three, Talented and Empowered Teams, we have adopted- Connected to commitment three, talented and empowered teams, we have adopted a Grow Your Own initiative focused on three critical shortage areas in elementary, special education, and mathematics. These are the critical shortage areas that we have in particularly strong numbers in the district, so into the year, we carry vacancies in those three areas. And so, we wanted to have a targeted approach to think about how we might focus our bonus pay, incentive pay, and other incentives in those particular areas, and how we might better support provisionally licensed teachers in those areas to get more through, to and through the process towards standard certification. We've identified two university partners in that effort. These were partners that had online programs in that, in those areas. So William Carey has the only online available special education program. They've agreed to align with us and offer a reasonable tuition rate, as well as the University of Mississippi. Connected to practice support, which is another barrier for students quite, or for our staff members quite often, we are providing a partnership with Schoolhouse Twenty-One, which has a case management model, and testing vouchers to eliminate an additional barrier for staff. We've been able to align our federal spending to secure vouchers, to be able to provide those for those that assess and are ready to take the Praxis Core. And then finally, we have a number of partnerships with MDE and the Kellogg Foundation, including the Mississippi Teacher Residency Program, which is a program focused on assistant teachers, and allowing them a two-plus-two, so those with an associate's degree, two additional years, and a focus program, all free of charge to them, which is funded through an effort with the Kellogg Foundation, and a performance-based licensure track. For commitment four, which is our joyful learning environments, our Partners in Education Office is working to assist schools in identifying specialty partners, especially mentorship, as that was an important call-out in our plan. Also, social-emotional learning, which is so vital for our students, we've piloted a new social-emotional learning curriculum in two schools, John Hopkins and Dawson Elementary, where they have behavioral support classrooms. We think that that's an appropriate space for that pilot, to be able to learn from it, and to consider whether or not that could grow to support other elementary programs. As you've been informed at prior board meetings, we've expanded the Talk About the Problems, or TAP peer mediation program. We're excited to inaugurate a new set of peer mediators at Blackburn just over a month ago. We also have implemented family workshops, including science and reading fair supports, a homeless seminar program, or what we're calling MVP, our McKinney-Vento program, because of the supports that we want to provide for housing insecure families, a family financial literacy fun night that was housed at Morrison, and then also the Fall School of Instruction that was done in partnership with Jackson Council PTA. Our final commitment is improving a culture of accountability and excellence. And here, specifically, our chief work is to improve the operational responsiveness of our district in response to parents and families. And so, we've signaled this year to focus on three priorities, and each year of the implementation, we'll focus on new priorities as we gain traction in these areas. So this year, we are emphasizing enrollment and registration, transportation, and our textbook processes. These are all processes where we believe that there's room for growth, and how we interact and interface with families. So with enrollment and registration, we want to simplify the affidavit residency process for those that are under the federal designation who are doubled up, those who are shared residency, and may not have bills in their name. We want to be able to simplify that process for families. We want to provide seamless service to our families that are facing housing insecurity, and register a greater number of them in the spring, prior to the school year, and just complete a more robust spring enrollment cycle this year. So we've set some targets around that. With transportation, we have engaged with vendors to explore creating a mobile app to provide route information, location, and push alerts for communication with families. This has been done in a number of our outlying, our neighboring counties and other districts, and it's just a great way to communicate with parents about where their bus may be, and if there are any scheduling changes, which is a frequent occurrence, and it would just be a great way to improve that responsiveness. And then finally, with textbook processes, we wanted to modernize our textbook inventory process to be able to involve a scanner system, that's currently a manual count, that's often done by school personnel, and also pilot electronic textbook offerings through a Bring Your Own Device, or BYOD, platform, that will allow students to use their own cellphones or tablet devices after getting security clearance and having that vetted for network access, but just expand another opportunity for students to access their texts outside of school. These initiatives, under the culture of accountability and excellence, both speak to operational responsiveness, but also our call-out for inviting and cultivating innovative practices in the district. So our key takeaways tonight about implementation of excellence for all, we're working purposely as a team to fulfill the commitments made in this excellence-for-all strategic plan. Our optimizing-for-equity redesign plan, which is going to be presented tonight, is really a continuation of that effort. So one of the things that we want to signal is that this broader design of what will be presented tonight is part and parcel with the commitments that we've made this summer. And finally, we are on track with a variety of our plans, academic, behavioral, and attendance benchmarks. And we believe that our efforts to strengthen the early grades will really shore up later performance in the middle and high school grades. And with that, I invite your questions. We'll provide another update on excellence for all. We're planning to do that on a semester-wide basis, and so we've currently scheduled that for the board meeting in June, so that you could hear more complete updates each semester.
I would like a copy of the PowerPoint. Can you get that to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dr. Cormac, you mentioned materials that will help students with ACT started in eighth grade. Is there a particular program that you will be using with those students?
So presently, there's not a preparation program that's utilized at the middle school. However, there is an assessment that students do just to create a benchmark, and it gives them both a composite score and then the subset scores. We believe that information is helpful both to them, to parents, and to teachers, and then that is information that becomes a part of their plans as they matriculate into our high schools, so that when they begin as freshmen, we have a strong sense of where their areas of strength are, and where their areas of growth are. But the more robust sets of supports around specific test preparation happen at the high school.
So Explore program is no longer used with eighth graders?
The Explore program? I can't speak to the particulars of the Explore program. Is there? Okay. Yeah, I was not aware. So no, the Explore program is not currently used.
Dr. Cormac, thank you for this report. It's very helpful. I just had a brief question about one of our commitments regarding partnering with our daycare centers and early learning centers. How are we going about doing that so that we are able to reach all of the children who need serving? Because it's my understanding that our current daycare systems as set up don't serve all of the children who need. Is that correct, pre-K? Would you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. So Dr. Green will share some data as part of the optimizing proposal, but we know, based on our entering kindergarten cohort, there is an assessment that each of our students take a state-mandated test that's part of the Literacy-Based Promotion Act. It's called the MCAS. We receive a kindergarten readiness score. So as students matriculate into JPS kindergarten, we have a test that allows us to see what percentage of those students are ready for kindergarten, enter-school-ready. And that assessment measures both early numeracy and early literacy skills. Based on that data and information, we also know which are the providers, what preschool experience each of our scholars have had prior to kindergarten. And so, based on current data, we have about four hundred students who come into Jackson Public Schools in any given year, over the last several years, who have been at home, and have not had a formal pre-kindergarten experience. So part of our work is to do more active recruitment for those families where they're currently not being served anywhere. And we're in partnership with the City of Jackson, which was received a Kellogg grant. Dr. Merritt has been coordinating monthly events with our childcare providers here in the sport room, where they share concerns, where we have been sharing curricula with them. So as we adopted and this board approved the new OWL curriculum, which is the standard space-aligned curriculum, it also made space for our prior adoption to be made available to our childcare centers. And so, we're talking all the time about ways that we can align on curriculum programs that will help to make certain that more students are prepared, and how we might do a better outreach to ensure that, once we create the availability for pre-kindergarten, that we have the families to be able to fill those spaces.
Thank you. It's very helpful.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is in regards to the proficiency benchmarks for reading and math. Do you feel like we're on track? You know, so we implemented a new curriculum, K-5, and Wit and Wisdom, K-8, Ready Math. There's obviously a learning curve whenever you implement a new curriculum with teachers and students as well. And so, do you feel like, how has the implementation of that gone, and do you feel like we're still on track with that learning curve in place?
Right. So of course, with any implementation, there are growing pains. I have, am out in schools on a weekly basis. Our assistant superintendents are in schools daily, and the reports that we've gotten about implementation are fairly strong. We're doing some things, and this board approved some additional supports to curricular implementation, so our lead partners are actually helping and assisting our district teams in providing that supports, those supports. We have an office of teaching and learning and curriculum leads that are going out to deploy those supports, and our principals are helping to lead and champion the work around implementation fidelity. We've heard really strong and positive feedback, particularly about Wit and Wisdom, and the level of thinking and critical thinking, and engagement in Socratic seminar, and discussion of books and texts, authentic texts that students are having. In fact, I was at Clazelle yesterday morning in a fifth-grade classroom, and it was great, from a district standpoint, to see a lesson that I had seen previously at Span, the same lesson, so we have this district continuity, and also just to see the level of engagement for the students. And so, I asked them some questions about the Phantom Toll booth, and they were able to go and find text-based evidence to support their thinking. And it's just a really exciting thing as educators to see with these new sets of tools, what our students are capable of. But the level of engagement is at a really high level.
I'll just add just quickly, we, I just happened this morning to have been with a few of our team members, led by our executive director of teaching and learning, on a learning walk, and specifically, looking at the implementation at, we were at Lester Elementary School, which is A-rated and has amongst our elementaries some of the highest proficiency rates, at least in English Language Arts. We were there, looking at the implementation and trying to get a sense for how teachers are utilizing the tools and the resources, what are some of the practices that we're seeing consistently being utilized, and where are there opportunities for us as a district to pull up from individual schools to what are we doing across the district? And I'll also note that Lester, Pecan Park, and North Jackson Elementary Schools have been identified as spotlight schools to serve as models for the district, to help us really hasten and accelerate the learning across the board. So with, along with all of the continuous support from the Office of Teaching and Learning, certainly from the assistant superintendents, from our lead partners, and the curricular folks, those teams coming in, supporting us, we also have created internally these model schools, where we can continue to push, well, support them in further developing their practices, but also pushing team members there so that they can see stellar and solid practice.
Thank you. The examples are really helpful. Another question I have is in regards to the practice support. I know that last year, there was a moment where there was, there's some clarity provided by the Department of Education for teacher certifications going into this year. How are we looking? Is there any guidance on what will happen next year, and how are we prepared, preparing, set for implementing whatever comes out of the State Department?
Great. So a really big question, we spend, we work weekly and daily on this. And so, as a district, we have made approximately three hundred seventy-two special non-renewable requests. Those are one-year provisional licenses, licenses that we request on behalf of the teacher for the one-year license. In order for those teachers to make it into year two of that license, they need to clear a variety of expectations, of requisites. So one of those is that they pass all three components of the Praxis Core, math, reading, and writing, and that they also pass a Praxis Two exam in their specialized content area. So if I'm a biology teacher, I need to pass all three aspects of the Praxis Core, and the Praxis Two is focused on biology. They must also be admitted into an alternate route program. So those three particular criteria. What we've done in Human Resources Department with support from Dr. Tommy Knolls is to build out a spreadsheet of each of the individuals that have, we've requested a license for in the district. And we can speak to each individual within that spreadsheet to talk about which of those barriers they have cleared, and what supports they need. And so, that's the beauty of the case management approach that's provided by Schoolhouse Twenty-One, is that we can begin to look at those that are close and need some additional support, potentially just in one of those Praxis Core exams, enroll them as part of our Schoolhouse Twenty-One partnership, and then give them the support through those tutorial sessions to clear that barrier. Once they feel adequately prepared to take the exam, we can then hand them a voucher and allow them to test, so that we can move more of those numbers through. We plan to provide a more robust update about where we sit in the spring on those numbers, and of the three hundred seventy-two, how many we've been able to move out of year one of that licensure request into year two. But it is something that we're laser-focused on, and those university partnerships will also allow us to make good traction in there, because with those university partnerships, we will help them to clear the barrier of program entry for the alternate route program. An additional aspect connected to our special educators is we identified eighty-two assistant teachers who are working with students with special needs, did a triage approach to look at where they stand for licensure, and how many of those assistant teachers had completed a bachelor's, and that have made outreach to each of them to enroll them in the William Carey program. So we're thinking on a targeted approach about where are our vacancies, who are the folks that we have requested a special non-renewable license for, and what supports does each individual need, and what can we provide as a system in a focused way.
Okay. Thank you.
That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board members, with that, that concludes my remarks this afternoon, evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And administrators, as always, the presentations were outstanding and very informative. Do we have participants for public comment?
Yes. Board members, you have eight persons who have signed up to address you this evening.
Okay. Before we get started, I want to set some expectations for our participants. You will have, of course, three minutes for your presentation. The board will listen and consider your comments, but we will not respond at this time. If you have a grievance which still needs resolution, and you have not acted on it, we encourage you to follow up with your comment, on your comments, with direct communication with the administration. I say this to ensure that even though you will not receive feedback from us, your comments are heard and considered. First person?
First person is Lee Bernard, who would like to address you regarding the Lanier-Fieder pattern.
feeder pattern.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the superintendent and the trustees, my name is Leigh Bernard. I'm 1968 graduate of Lanier High School. My mother, my father, five brothers, five sisters, all attended Lanier. I'm also the Vice President of the Georgetown Community Association, and I work with the Lanier High School National Alumni Association. And I come before you to let you know that we appreciate the article in the Mississippi Lynx of your proposal to develop a plan to strengthen the Lanier feeder pattern by 2022. We thank you for that. And this article tells the community that you understand the issues. We, as a community, are ready to help in any way we can, and we are looking for solutions. We are here to help. We care about Lanier. We care about Georgetown and the City of Jackson. Some suggestions. Make Lanier more attractive from an academic standpoint, which is most important to us. Maybe update the science lab, update the computers, and most of all, update the classrooms. Of course, Lanier, this building was built in 1954. Bring in more STEM classes, make more ROTC classes, and make Lanier more attractive inside and outside the building. We know you're working on window restorations and the restroom renovations. But at the same time, Lanier is the only high school that does not have a field house. And also on the outside, students coming to Lanier every day have to pass the old Maple Street Apartments, which is just a lot now, which has turned into a dump. We need some help to clean that up. In addition to the buildings across the street from the apartments where they used to be, they are all falling in. And the lot is owned by the state. We need to put some pressure on the state to get that done. And the one thing I'd like to mention is that Channel Three, WWT, did a disservice to the board and Lanier students. By doing the report about closing schools, they left Lanier on the screen an awful long time. They talked about closing schools, had nothing to do with Lanier. At that time, social media lit up. Why is it that they're going to close Lanier? And again, we thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Next is Adrian Lacy Griffin, who'd like to address you regarding consolidation from an administrator's perspective.
Good evening. Ms. Johnson, Superintendent Green, members of the board. My name is Adrian Lacy Griffin, and I'm the principal at Hardy Middle School. As a school administrator, I must be mission-focused and able to build consensus around the strategic initiatives of my district. Paramount among these initiatives is increasing achievement for every student. When I'm in conversations with my Hardy parents, I let them know that although achievement is what we sing, safety is my priority. An underpopulated building has many safety challenges. The responsibilities of a school administrator are formidable in light of all that faces public education. When we run buildings that have numerous empty corridors, we create unnecessary spaces for mayhem to occur. My head custodian, my administrative staff, and I have to be extra vigilant to ensure that when we leave areas that are underpopulated, we lock off the annex, parts of the seventh grade hall, parts of the eighth grade hall, and monitor student use of restrooms in empty areas of the building. We love 545 Ellis Avenue, but we realize that the enrollment that we have today is far from what it was when there were a thousand kids that graced the halls. There are numerous challenges in leading a building. I view every challenge as an opportunity to prove that public education is resilient and should remain the cornerstone of our society. I support the opportunity to optimize for equity.
Thank you. Next is Elise Stewart, who'd like to address you regarding the strategic plan.
Hi. I just wanted to give my support for the optimizing for equity plan. I'm a parent, I'm sorry, my name's Elise Katitsky-Stewart. I'm a parent of a first grader at McWilly Elementary, and I'm also a Mura alum. And I've been on the PTA board at McWilly for three years now. And so, talked to a lot of parents about this. There's a lot of excitement about the plan and just a lot of support for it. I did want to raise a couple of concerns surrounding the elimination of sixth-grade Montessori at McWilly. Completely understand, makes perfect sense. I understand why that's being proposed. But two concerns are, one, that we really need more Montessori education and not less because it is amazing. And so I would love for the district to consider adding a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade Montessori track at an existing middle school like Bailey. And there does seem to be a good amount of support for this idea at McWilly. And then the second concern that several parents have raised is the immediacy of this decision for the current fifth graders who are planning on staying at McWilly because the kids haven't been working about on a transition. The parents and the families haven't been. They may have lost some opportunities, like APAC applications have closed. So, I don't know if it can be delayed a year. I'm not sure, I'm, again, not the parent of a fifth grader, so I'm not exactly sure how that can be addressed, but I would like y'all to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, and I'm going to apologize if I mispronounce the name, Yurakanya Taylor?
I'm going to need you at home. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you all today? I'm a proud parent of two scholars at JPS. One is at Forest Hill, ninth grade, and the other one is at Cywell Middle School. I apologize, I get nervous speaking, I don't know why, considering I've been in court my whole life. But I'm here to just voice my opinion on the plan that's in place. And I can say at first, I had a lot of cons, but after the meeting on last night, it brought a lot of clarification, the things that need to be done to continue to have our scholars to move forward. And with that being said, I can speak on behalf of experience that while my ninth grader was at Cywell, a lot of teachers took it upon themselves to do one-on-one work with him. That included on Saturdays, some Sunday evenings, some early morning sessions, some evening sessions. And with that, now my scholar is a grade-A student at Forest Hill High School, and might I add that he's artistic. Along with my seventh grader that's at Cywell as well now, and he's receiving the same services that my ninth grader received. And I know with a lot of prayer, he is going to receive grade A's in high school as well. The only thing that I did talk to Dr. Green about and that I was concerned about is information that we receive. We will like to receive information, if we can, from you all and not from the media beforehand. And by that being said, if a parent forum of some type can be put in place to come back and speak with the other parents about the information that has been brought forward. And I'm going to just leave you with this quote. And it says, in Proverbs 1727, I'm sorry. Yes. It says, in Proverbs 1727, "He that had knowledge spare of his words, and a man of understanding of excellence, is of excellent spirit." So that just mean, if I understand everything that's going on, I will not be so against everything that you're trying to do to better our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlotte Brent, the Closing of Bar Elementary, on a positive side.
Good evening, everyone, to the board, trustees, superintendent, Mr. Green. I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Green last week about the closing of Bar. And some of the concerns that some of the other parents have, I had to give them a kind of a point of view from, coming from Pundexter, because this would be my child's second time going through the process. And I know a lot of times people get scared of change, but sometimes change is good. Because I can speak for, coming from Pundexter to Bar, the transition was good. You know, the kids were able to have familiar faces and things of that nature. And they also was welcoming other students coming over. And like I was telling Dr. Green on last week, my only concern is making sure that the transition is good because I feel like Pecan Park is an excellent school, is an A-rated school. So, I think that's a good opportunity for my daughter as well. So, I feel like beforehand, the only thing I was saying is trying to have some bonding sessions for the kids before they get to the school, so it won't be like a slap in the face and then they won't be so scared and, you know, face things like mental anguish and things of that nature going to the new school. So I had, you know, suggested some things to him, like maybe, you know, starting for the year coming up, maybe the two schools can combine, by them being elementary, on some of their field trips sometime, or even having an end of the year field day, you know, kind of like, you know, we're welcoming you guys to Pecan Park, but also giving the kids a chance to interact with each other on a positive note before they get to the new school. But I'm all for change, and I really think it's a positive thing going forth. I don't have any complaints about it, and I am a product of JPS, my own self. So, continue to do what you do, and I, like I said, I don't have any complaints. I'm looking forward to the upcoming change.
Thank you. Next is Alice Clark, combining schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a good evening and a bad evening for me, and I say that because we're all looking at, we don't know really what we're looking at at this time. I've had the opportunity to serve in the legislature before some of you people back here were even born. I've been on education for the last 34 years. And the other thing was that when you brought your better students out, I felt real good. And the reason I felt so good, because most of those schools, those children are in schools in the district that I represent. And for those of you who don't know, I'm the person who responsible for the IB program. And they wanted to take it to some other area, I say, I worked too hard for you not to let it stay in my district. So that's how I got to be at Jim Hill. Those of you who don't have children in Jim Hill, I need you to know that I see the, I'll do like they do me, they call me the mother of this and the mother of that. And I see the mother of the IB program on the board, and that's good. And I know that, and she's been there since I was there, and I thank you, Ms. Hilliard, for that. But when it comes to looking at the combining the schools, I want you to look at what you're doing. You know what the name sometime means to an individual? You know, you all know how you, how we are about Allcoin and how you are about the others. You remember about your, about your other schools. The name sometime just does things for you. So, I don't want you to take the child's name that they really love, consider when you combine the schools. And I've looked at the numbers, and looking at the numbers, I know that if you don't have the numbers of students there, we can't afford to have that, so we need to do that. But consider, when you look at the name, whether you somehow can combine that name with the others of schools that you're putting together. And I mention that again because those of you who might not know, oh, my time is up. Pecan wasn't always Pecan. It was once something else. But it was my only son who went to the public schools, who came home and said, is there any way we can get our name, the school name changed? Because we won the team, our team won, and they looked at it and said, you know, I didn't know they had a team over there, and most of them look normal. So they did research and came up with Pecan Park. That's how it is. But I thank you for your services to our education, and I want you to continue to do what's in the best interest of our children. Thank you again, and have a good holiday.
Thank you. Next is M. Fran Bridges, who'd like to address you on encouraging student and community success.
Thank you very much. Let me take the opportunity to thank Superintendent Green and the JPS administrators and our board for your hard work, and we appreciate all that you do for our children and our community. We recognize when numbers drop, something has to happen. So I don't think there's a lot of disagreement when it comes to something happening. I think we need to be strategic about it. I think if you look at private schools, student-teacher ratio, there's probably some evidence to say that smaller classes may be a little bit more productive. And so I would want us to be very strategic in that we've been, we've been identified as a failing school district. So some of us have been working, all of us have been working very hard to move us up. So I'm a little concerned about the growth as to what this is going to do. It might be that we are moving a little fast because when we, when there was a closing of the schools or when it was considered for the takeover, our Heinz County legislators went and did some things in the field at each school, took a report to the governor, and was able to have some influence on him not signing off on JPS being taken over. And so we had that same momentum, had that same momentum when it came to the bond issue. So we've been working very hard as a community. And in the neighborhood where I live, children catch the bus on the corner by my house, but they don't necessarily live there, okay? So I see children on the street doing school hours. So I don't know when we are talking about the number of children that we've lost in the district. I'd like to see some, we would like to see some information that sort of breaks that down for us. You know, what happened to them? Where did they go? We want to make sure they are not at home. And we would just request that you be inclusive. Paperwork went home with the students. The community was scrambling around, trying to figure out some of us what was going on. So there are multiple ways to communicate, and we just respectfully ask to be included. And when it comes to the bond monies or whatever and how they're going to be used for the schools that are closed, closing or proposed to be closed, we would want to have some dialogue around that. And lastly, the travel time for our children, pre-K students, the travel time for them and any other students. When George closed, I think they were transported, some of them, across town. So we might need to do some realigning across the board to make sure that our children are served in the communities where they live as best as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, it's Shantae Crockett, who'd like to address you regarding Bar Elementary.
Thank you, hello, everyone. My name is Shantae Crockett, and I'm with the Center for Social Entrepreneurship in West Jackson. CSE in the I-Village after-school program at Bar Elementary School was named Partner of the Year for 2018 and 19. So not only are we a supporter of the West Jackson community, we are a supporter of the school district. At Bar, at Bar's last meeting, there was a card that we wanted to fill out or that we were asked to fill out, and it said, "I wish, I want, and I wonder." I thought that was very interesting because for me, I wish, I wonder, and I want us to figure out something that we can do with this building that's going to be left vacant in our community. So as much as we hate to see the school close, we definitely understand. It's just that we're going to have a vacant building in our community, and we need to do something, you know, something with it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Board members, that's all. Thank you. Now, board, we have information-only items. Dr. Burt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Johnson.
for two days of high school graduation and to also include our summer school dates on the calendar at the following sites. Lake Elementary, Key Elementary, McWillie Elementary, Hardy Middle, and Provine High School. This amendment proposes to split the seven high school graduations between two days, May 26th and 27th, 2020. This revised schedule will assist with the current compressed logistics of a one-day schedule to allow for morning practices for each high school. This amendment also lists our summer school dates, which would be June 1st through 30th of 2020, providing greater transparency and proactive communication with our parents and families. This recommendation aligns with our commitment number five, our culture of accountability and excellence through thoughtful planning, deliberate and consistent use of systems, and also data analysis to make decisions.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I had one question that I actually just thought of while you were presenting. At one point, when we set graduation, it backed into our requirement to have a certain number of school days during the year. Have we looked at that to make sure that we're still in compliance on that, right?
Yes, we've had a lot of conversation.
Okay, great. That's all you need to say.
Compliance.
All right, thank you.
Cat leaks, a lot of conversations these days.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are back to Dr. Green.
Okay, as they're setting up the PowerPoint there, as I launch into this conversation, and this is the formal presentation of our optimizing-for-equity plan to support and engage more deeply in our strategic plan Excellence for All. I do want to name very clearly my appreciation to all of those who've spent time with us over the last few weeks, couple of weeks, in conversations at schools, at the parent meetings, conversations with our staff members, board members have been there, members of our team have been there, community members, community providers. Several folks have just been engaged with us very fully and deeply in those conversations. And I want to name a great appreciation for it. It has absolutely helped to sharpen our thinking about what we're proposing and helped us to identify some potential pitfalls as we consider moving forward with this. Optimizing for equity. As we consider the changes that we're proposing tonight and that we'll talk through in a bit, there are four big pieces here that really jump out and that are most important as we consider the benefits here. First and foremost, we've got to make sure that we've got equitable access to resources across the district. I've said to a few folks, and it's unfair, it's unfortunate, but depending on where you've graduated from school, or where you attended, within our district, your story and your experiences can be drastically, dramatically different. And that's not good. And that's something that we can control and we must do something to ensure that there's equitable access to resources across the district. This is both for our scholars and for teachers. As well, we've got to continue to look at and develop ways to stabilize the school communities and our staffing, and building the kind of stability across schools where young people can have longer-term relationships with their teachers and with their scholars. And right now, we experience quite a bit of mobility for various reasons amongst scholars as well as the teachers. High-quality instruction, full stop, we've got to find more and more ways and continue to identify and create ways for us to be better at teaching and learning, which is our core work. And part of that is a focus, a clear focus on professional development for our educators, not just our teachers, but educators more broadly stated. And then finally, fiscal sustainability. We know that we've got some challenges with our financial resources. And so the smarter we are about how we utilize those resources and how we get the greatest benefit and outcomes from the investments that we're making, the better off we'll be. Many of you have seen or have some knowledge about our enrollment trend over the last nine to ten years. I mean, the headline there is that we have seen considerable decline in our enrollment. More concretely stated, we've seen over six hundred, or six thousand seven hundred students leave our district over, or since 2010, 2011, which is about twenty percent, or more than twenty percent of our student enrollment. That's a huge decline. And I think most of us are aware that we haven't kept up with that decline in the way that we, the expenditures that we have within our district and the way that we organize ourselves. There's several reasons for the decline. Folks have left the city. So that's part of it, obviously. And so you're bound to see some decline in the public school setting. We've also seen a decline due to charter schools, folks looking at other options. And so that's some piece of it. If we're honest with ourselves, some piece of the decline has to do with our poor performance. And that's just truth. Again, as I said earlier, depending on where you went to school and at what time you went to school, your story about your education in JPS would be very different from someone else's. And so we've seen those declines over the years. Given those trends, this trend with our enrollment, we can't, we simply can't continue to do school as usual. We've got to, we've got to be honest about our current reality and the ways that we can restructure ourselves to better serve our scholars' needs. So what is optimizing for equity? There's, this is a three-year plan or proposal to redesign our district and to better utilize our resources and to fortify and accelerate and support our efforts around our strategic plan Excellence for All. It includes, and we'll get into this more deeply in a few, but expanding the pre-K access at McWillie, which is related, directly related to commitment number one in the plan, a strategic plan, a strong start. Repurposing Van Winkle as a pre-kindergarten center to serve especially our scholars in South Jackson. Again, commitment number one, a strong start. Also, closing Bar and merging with Pecan Park Elementary. That's commitment number two, providing, and that's around innovative teaching and learning, but it's also a look at and a focus on maintaining fiscal sustainability. Consolidating Siwell and Cardozo Middle Schools starts to approach and support commitment number two, and specifically around equitable access resources. And the same with Hardy and Blackburn Middle Schools, commitment number two, equitable resources and, or access to resources. Repurposing the Rowan Middle School as a district-wide center for teaching and learning as we look at and focus on commitment number three, this opportunity to build talented and empowered teams and share the learning across the district. This will move us much further down the road to have such a center that would facilitate that ongoing learning, professional learning. And then lastly, this commissioning a task force to support the planning effort around the linear feeder, high school feeder pattern, not just linear high school, the feeder pattern, which would help to address enrollment, the facilities, as well as academic programming. This obviously supports our efforts around building and sustaining school communities that work and that are thriving. Again, it's clear through conversations that we've already had with all of our stakeholders, through the reports that have been written, the focus groups and on and on with stakeholders across the board, that we're all desiring to put our scholars in the best position for success. Now, we don't always agree on what that path is, but it's clear that we agree that we've got to position our young folks for greater success as we move forward. So I want to talk now about the elementary components to this redesign proposal. And they include McWillie most acutely, McWillie, Van Winkle, and Bar. A big piece of the focus on elementaries, these elementary schools, is around an expansion of pre-kindergarten. And many of you will recall that there was a report that was done commissioned by the Better Together Commission. And in there, there were a couple of really, really powerful quotes that had to do with early childhood education. And I'll read these just for emphasis. During the community sessions and on surveys, participants overwhelmingly agreed that comprehensive early childhood education is important because it helps prepare the children for school. Also stated, for those parents who did not have children that participated in an early childhood education programs, the reason cited most often was availability. And so there's both this general consensus that early childhood education is not just coloring, is not just playtime, it's powerful and necessary, and that we have an issue with availability and one that we must address. That again was taken from the One Voice Report, canvassing report that was done about a year ago. In addition, as we think about this expansion of pre-K, we look at kindergarten readiness. And Dr. Cormac mentioned this a little bit before, but as we think about and look at all of the known kind of pre, well, known offerings or providers, so to speak, of experiences, not all of them are specifically education-focused, but experiences that young people have had before they've arrived with us in kindergarten. And you see that there's a variety of those. JPS, pre-K classes for those young people, and we have six hundred, at the time that this snapshot was taken, six hundred and thirty-seven of them who were enrolled in our pre-K programming. The average score on the MCAS readiness benchmark is three, five hundred and thirty-two point one. The readiness is benchmarked at five hundred and thirty. And so the average score for our scholars was at five thirty, just above that benchmark level. And with no disrespect to our partners in this work, because it is very difficult work, very important work, but ours was the only that had an average score above the benchmark threshold. And so in addition to our desire to expand pre-kindergarten offerings within JPS, there's a specific call-out in our larger strategic plan to partner more closely, and you heard a bit about this earlier, to partner more closely with the providers outside of Jackson Public Schools. We wanted to really, really zero in on, this is again, not just about childcare. This is not just about playtime, it's not just about coloring. There are some real academic benefits that are gained when our young people experience pre-kindergarten educational experiences. And so again, McWillie is one of the schools that is directly impacted by the proposal that we're making here tonight, board members. And there are a few kind of pieces to this that I want to share. One, we're proposing an expansion of pre-kindergarten offerings at McWillie. And based on our count and the capacity of the building, we can increase by five sections of pre-kindergarten classes, which is about a hundred four-year-olds added to the school. In addition, and this was noted earlier, due to low enrollment in sixth grade at McWillie, we are proposing that we discontinue service, or end the Montessori program at fifth grade, at the end of fifth grade, and allow our scholars who are sixth graders to enter the middle school program, which we believe is better suited for them, given where they are in their developmental stage. This proposal also, just parenthetically, but it bears stating, also supports fortifying the kindergarten program at Boyd Elementary by reducing the number of transitions that those young people would have. Currently, those classes are housed at McWillie, although they are Boyd students. And so by moving those kindergarten classrooms back to Boyd, we reduce the transitions that those young folks are having, which is kind of a no-brainer. But we have this opportunity to address it and we need to. The next school included in this, or addressed in this proposal, is Van Winkle. And just for your information, just wanted to share the decline in enrollment here at Van Winkle. It's been declining over some years. But I'll tell you, the larger argument here and the focus here around Van Winkle is the opportunity to serve our pre-K students. That building, and some of you know this, that Van Winkle building was modeled and designed and with Montessori programming in mind and with the kinds of collaborative teaching and community educational experiences in mind there, as well with restrooms, close proximity to the classrooms. And these are all state requirements that we would have for pre-K programs and for pre-K classrooms. And so the building is ripe to serve a school full of four-year-olds, amazing four-year-olds. So again, with the design of the site, we wouldn't need to do much retrofitting at all in order to serve the young people there. We would serve young people basically in South Jackson, specifically in the Provine, Jim Hill, Forest Hill, Wingfield, high school feeder patterns. And the scholars who are currently being served at Van Winkle would be rezoned to Clausell and Bates Elementary Schools. We're already working on the rezone maps should the board support this proposal, because we wanted to make sure that we were getting ahead with all of the logistics that'll have to be worked out. I should also state here, though, that this proposal does not necessitate or envision us removing pre-kindergarten, general education, pre-kindergarten classes in other schools. We would like to have as many as possible. And our goal here is to, as Dr. Cormac mentioned earlier, we have this opportunity to nearly double the pre-kindergarten seats with this proposal. And so we're not looking to remove others, but to add to the sum total so that more and more of the young people in Jackson are served. Just to note, there's currently an English language learner program that is situated at Van Winkle. And that would be, that and those related supports would be shifted to Bates Elementary School. We're already collaborating with the county human resource agency, which is the key head start provider, just to help us to think through some opportunities and to do some initial planning on how we might work together to better support the young people and their families. We'd also look to provide more inclusive services for young people, these four-year-olds at the Van Winkle site. I'll also note, it's, as important as it is to start early in educating, formally educating young people is also really, really important. And frankly, starting early gives us an opportunity to identify any special needs much earlier on, so that we're not waiting a couple of years to start to intervene and provide additional resources. But the earlier we start, the better opportunities we have to support those young people in their learning. Transportation, exceptional education would be, services would be, continue to be provided to the young people. And we should also note that just as any other scholars here in the district and families, they have an opportunity to apply for the special programs at Casey for grades K through five, Power APAC grades four and five, and Obama Magnet grades K through five. The third elementary school impacted most acutely by this proposal is Bar Elementary School. And although we've got kind of the trend line showing there, I'll just kind of caution us to still note that this school has been, for many years, far under-enrolled. It's a beautiful space. The building itself has major issues, but it's beautiful space. It's a beautiful space, the building itself has major issues, but it's beautiful space because of the work that the educators have done there to create that beautiful warm space. It's been grossly under-enrolled for years. And although there was the spike in 2017, fall 2017, where we consolidated the Poindexter Scholars in with Barr, we've experienced a dip again since then. And so we're compelled that this is not something that we can continue in order, as we continue striving to do our very best to educate our young people. And so what does the proposal include in terms of the Barr Elementary School? We would propose closing it effective July 2020, again, due to the enrollment, well, decline, but the extremely low enrollment there. But also, there are major building issues. The entire first, our basement floor is just not usable, including cafeteria. We just don't have those as options for us. The current approximately four, one hundred and forty or so Barr students would attend Pecan Park Elementary, which is an A-rated school by the Mississippi Department of Education. So for those who are concerned about their young people going from a school that is highly, high-performing, we were mindful of that as we considered, actually, as we considered all of these transitions. And here again, for those living in the Barr school zone, transportation would be provided. And again, as with any scholars in the district, the families may apply for special program school enrollment at Casey, Power APAC, Obama Magnet. So those were the elementary kind of components to this proposal. The middle school components, in the middle school components, there are essentially two school consolidations, Siwell and Cardozo, and then Hardy and Blackburn. And I'll talk a little bit about those and give some background data now. First off, these consolidations, while the schools are seriously under-enrolled, these consolidations at middle school, we're thinking about these in terms of some pretty amazing opportunities that we have to increase the experiences and improve on the experiences that the young people have. And there, simply stated here, one, enhanced teacher collaboration, opportunities to really build out teams where teachers can build and learn from one another as they're doing their work. Greater equity in course and elective offerings is a huge issue across our schools, and we've got to ensure that we are being more equitable with these resources and opportunities. As well, increased access to certified teachers with fewer classrooms, thereby fewer teachers to teach in those classrooms. There's a shorter, or there are fewer teachers or certified teachers that we must find and recruit in order to teach in those classrooms. And then lastly, the fiscal savings for staffing, that is just pretty mind-boggling as we think about it. And so thinking about it, as we look at first, Siwell and Cardozo, just looking at staffing, and that's not even all of the staff, but just looking at the leadership or administration and the teachers. If you look down the column under Siwell, then you see two point four, more than two point four million dollars being spent at Siwell. Four hundred students, two point four million being spent there. You look at Cardozo with four hundred and eighteen students, just looking, considering the administrative team and the teacher team, and that's inclusive of the electives, spending about two point two, almost two point three million dollars. In a combined site, serving about eight hundred and eighteen scholars, modeling out the number of teachers that we anticipate needing for, and this is, this is only factoring in our student-teacher ratio of twenty-four to one. So this isn't even as high as the state allows in terms of the cap. Just factoring in with the twenty-four to one ratio, student-to-teacher ratio, with that number of fifty-nine to sixty-one teachers, with that student ratio and with increased elective offerings, the range of spending would be somewhere between three point seven and three point nine million in the combined site. So the current combined costs, what we're currently spending at those two schools, Hardy and Cardozo, four point seven million, more than four point seven million. The potential savings in a consolidation, and again, that's with, that's with a ratio of twenty-four to one. The potential savings near a million. And again, this is just focused on the admin and teacher costs. That's not an all-in cost, but just looking at staffing, that's the savings there. And then, of course, the cost of heating and cooling two buildings, or one building versus two buildings, you know, those would be factored in as well. Now let's look at Hardy and Blackburn. Hardy with three hundred and eighty-two students. Currently, the spin rate is about two point six million dollars. Blackburn, three sixty-nine students, spending about two point four million. Combined, we'd have about seven hundred and fifty-one scholars that we'd serve, and with, again, the twenty-four to one student-to-teacher ratio and with increased electives, the spending, the range of spending would be somewhere in the order of three point six to three point eight million. And before I move on to the big reveal here, this, we, well, I can share this. So the current combined costs, over five million dollars for running those two buildings. And the potential savings here in a combined or a consolidated state, over a million, close to, or up to one point four million, again, just on staffing, admin and teachers. And the thing that I want to note here, and I'll go back just so that you can see it here, the, we've got to, I want to just note that the reality in the costs of teachers and the costs of administrators is going to be a bit variable, which is why we have this range here, because of the salaries, the actual salaries that folks are making. You have, in some schools where it's been hard to find and staff with teachers, you've got a lot of novice teachers with lower salaries. And in some schools with more stable staff, you've got teachers who've been with us for several years, tenured, more veteran, and so those salaries would be a bit more. I just wanted to call that out, just in case folks are looking at these numbers and saying, oh, I don't know how this works out. That's part of the challenge that we have, but it's also an opportunity for us to fortify and to have more stable staff. I won't spend too much time on this, just to accentuate this point about building enrollment and capacity at Siwell, where current enrollment around four hundred, where they have over a thousand student capacity in the building. Cardozo, about four hundred and eighteen in enrollment, capacity is nine seventy-five. Combining them, we're at about four, or eight eighteen scholars to be served in the building, still far less than the full capacity, which allows us room to grow or just room to spread out in the building, so we're not right up on one another. And obviously, the buildings were built to serve, you know, those higher numbers of scholars. Looking now at Hardy and Blackburn, again, three eighty-two with Hardy with a capacity of over a thousand. Three sixty-nine currently enrolled at Blackburn with a capacity of nine hundred. Together, seven fifty-one, again, not up to the, not filled to the brim, but filling the school to the point where we can have some wonderful economies of scales and really build out programming and offerings. Per pupil expenditure. Now, this information is taken from the most recent ESA report, Every Student Succeeds Act report, which shares an all-in kind of number, all of the resourcing and all of the expenditures for public school. And so as you look at the per pupil, what we're spending per pupil in these buildings, we added Chastain here, just as a point of reference. Please, no one run out and say that Chastain was part of the proposal. It's just for reference sake. The spending at Chastain is eight thousand eight hundred, or just over eight thousand eight hundred dollars per pupil. And the Chastain enrollment is over six hundred. And then you look at Blackburn and Hardy and Siwell and Cardozo, each of them quite a bit higher than the Chastain per pupil expenditure. And again, although we know that the needs of the scholars within a particular school start to drive some of the dollars that come into the school, if there are more students with special education needs and that sort of thing, you start to get more dollars into the school. But even with that, the point still remains that we've got inequitable spending across our schools, and there's an opportunity for us to shore that up. And so, the proposal for our middle schools. We propose that we would close Siwell and Hardy Middle Schools at the end of this school year. Siwell would be merged with the newer and more updated building, or Cardozo School in the Cardozo Building. The Siwell scholars who were zoned, or those Siwell scholars who live north of Highway Eighty would be rezoned to Blackburn. So there's a slight little adjustment that we'd be making in the school zones, just as we look at their proximity to the two different schools and bus routes and all of those things, it makes sense to kind of fix that one segment of town. Hardy would be merged with the newer and updated Blackburn School in the Blackburn Building, and these mergers would enhance, as we shared earlier, our building utilization would help us to be better stewards of our resources, and the net impact to scholars as we look at their course offerings and stability and staffing would be greatly improved. Specifically, looking at the course offerings, as we have continued to look across our schools, what we're currently offering and the differences from school to school, and looking at our own commitments to, both in the, well, especially in the strategic plan Excellence for All, there are three offerings that we're confident that we can offer to, in these consolidated schools, in both cases, to ensure that our young people have greater equity, health, Spanish, and art. Now, art is offered in some schools, but not in others, and that's one of the things, again, we want greater consistency. As we think about the middle school scholar, where they are in their lives, developmentally appropriate education for them, we've got to make sure that they're experiencing health education. We have to do that. That can't be a, oh, perhaps if we, you know, can offer it in this school, that's got to be a consistent. Also, we're developing our young people, preparing them to go out into the world and do great things in the world. As we think about global citizenship, one of the things that we've got to be much more determined and deliberate about is increasing their language skills, foreign language skills. And so this is a commitment, and we're delivering on a commitment, commitment number two, in fact, to provide for that, and the same with art. Transportation, exceptional education services would be provided, of course. And then, as you heard from some folks earlier today, and as we certainly heard in the parent meetings that we've held over the last couple of weeks, there's a real need for, and we agree, an opportunity for us to intentionally develop relationships as we march towards the fall. And so again, if you, board members, should approve of this proposal, then we would be working over the spring and summer to create intentional opportunities for young people to get to know one another across school communities and start to build those relationships that will be so powerful as they show up together in the fall in a classroom with new friends that they can learn alongside. As we kind of start to close this proposal out, there are two components that are kind of focused on the high school and the district level, JPS district. The first has to do with our teaching and learning, and the Center for Teaching and Learning. The proposal here is that, in accordance with our strategic plan and the commitments we've made there, that we'd repurpose the Rowan Middle School as a district-wide, world-class teaching and learning center. The students who are currently enrolled in our RE program there, we would relocate them just next door to the Brown School Building, which is currently shuttered and not being utilized. And so we'd utilize that building and likely build out programming there, because there's certainly a need for more and more programming for overaged, undercredited scholars. The renovations or enhancements to Rowan would occur over the next school year, and by fall 2021, we would open that center. Some of the benefits to the center, one, we are looking at the opportunity to create some revenue by hosting the professional development offerings there, decreasing the need to go out to other venues to host our professional development, which we are constantly do, or often doing. We can host actual seminars and conferences and things in our own space and invite not just our internal folks, educators, but those from around the metro area or even the state. And then lastly, there's even an opportunity for us to create a full-service cafeteria option for the professional development participants. So there are opportunities here to think more creatively about this, that space, and even about this focus on professional learning. Lanier High School, many folks have suggested or assumed that Lanier would be impacted by any proposal having to do with or based on the enrollment there. It's no secret that we've seen considerable decrease or decline in enrollment at Lanier High School. And perhaps if we looked across the feeder pattern and the feeder pattern, that's clear to us. And what's also clear to me, unlike the other schools that are noted in this proposal, that the issues at Lanier, whether it's from the enrollment side, the course offerings and themes, the focus of the school, and for sure, the facilities, that all of that would take much more than the next six months or year to address. We've got to, we've got to step back and look across the feeder pattern at Lanier and think more critically about who do we want to be? We've got this budding position already, this Health Sciences, or, yeah, Health Sciences Academy there, we've got some technology there, we've got a partnership already. There are opportunities to really build that out, but there are also major needs. And we've got to ensure that that facility and that the programming are so compelling that there's no question that folks in that area, and perhaps even from other areas in the city, would want to attend Lanier. And so the proposal here is that we would take some time over the next five months through the end of this school year to engage with a group of stakeholders and some of our internal educators to help to build out a plan, a comprehensive, really robust plan that would totally re-envision what is education in the Lanier feeder pattern, and all things would be on the table except closure or chartering the school. And so mergers perhaps, maybe not. Rethinking the focus perhaps, maybe not. Certainly rethinking the facility itself and the utilization of and ways to rethink that space, all of that would be on the table. And so the charge would be, that we put out, would be to come up with a plan, a robust plan, that would be so compelling that anyone would want to attend there. And one of the reasons why we're considering, or why we're proposing that we take this approach with Lanier, one is that if we do our job right in the planning, along with the stakeholders... along with the stakeholders, this will likely be, require more resources than we currently have in our coffers. And so the planning effort plus fundraising effort will likely take some time. We've got to signal now though, that we can't continue steady state. And so, uh, again, this proposal, uh, specifically names that we've got to put a stake in the ground. What are we going to do? What are we going to be? How are we going to best serve our young people? And what, what, what will that require of us as we prepare over time? Um, and just to be clear, and so the launch of this new, newly envisioned Lanier High School Lanier feeder pattern would, would launch in the fall of twenty-two, giving us the remainder of this year for planning and then two years out for both fundraising, facilities enhancements, um, and, and fully developing the programming there and staffing and all the other pieces. So, um, as you know, there, there are lots of, uh, of big, uh, steps and logistics and details to be attended to, um, for something like this. Uh, not the least of which, uh, is, is, uh, really important, not only to our internal team, but as we've heard from our parents, um, to the larger community. Folks want to know that we would, um, take good care of our, of our Team JPS members. And so our resource, human resources team, uh, should this go forward, would be working one-on-one with our, um, team members, our current team members, any impacted by these, uh, proposed changes, uh, to support them in identifying the, the needs at the consolidated schools or at totally new schools, um, to help them to land softly. Also, uh, with our classified staff, um, the directors, um, and those who are leading in the operations, um, departments, they've been looking very closely at staffing, looking very closely at attrition, um, and even current vacancies. Um, and they too would have tha- that, uh, concierge, customer service approach to support them in landing, um, in, in roles, uh, within JPS. Um, and we're confident that based on the attrition that we typically see, that, that, um, all of our staff members will land, um, with, uh, with us. I want to be very clear that we are a people industry. We are a people business. And so we can't do this work without the people. And while we are convicted that these changes that we're, we're proposing here are best for children and children have to be first, we're also confident that if we don't, uh, do right by our, our educators, that we will have missed an opportunity, uh, to really build on, on what we believe is good and right for young people. For those who have not already been to our website to, uh, to see the information that's posted there, we have information posted on the website towards the, the bottom of the homepage. There's also a place where you can, uh, click to find our frequently asked questions. With all of the parent meetings, we've, uh, we've been calling questions, um, and, and, um, seeing some, definitely some trends and some overlaps in the questions that have been asked. But, um, using those to continue to build out the frequently asked questions and answering those there. Um, so we, we invite folks to go there for more information or to be reminded of what we've shared this evening. We will continue with family meetings this week. We'll continue with, um, collecting comment cards and, um, getting those questions to, to get those questions answered on our website. Um, and board members, per your request, we are coming to you tonight for information, with information only and would be coming back at the next appointed board meeting on January the seventh, um, with the, um, uh, final proposal and asking for board action. With that, um, I welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Um, first before I get to my questions, I just want to say I remember when we interviewed you, how you talked about equity and how impressed I was with that at the time. And, um, since then, you've defined equity for us. And not only have you defined it, but you've also created a plan that allows the district to start a process of meeting all student needs. Um, I also thank you for and appreciate the fact that before you brought this matter to the board formally, you, um, spoke to individuals at school that, that were going to be affected first, um, local elected officials and parents. So as, um, as a board, we have sat in and listened and been in these meetings and we have an abundance of information, um, from which to base our decision. Um, but there are some things that I think we still need in terms of commitment from you. And that is, how do we make this process measurable so that we can, um, make good on our goals and our promises? Um, we also need to know how often you will be reporting to the board on the transitions, how it's affecting students and those things. Um, and I personally would specifically like to hear about, uh, what is the actual benefit to our children for the cost savings? What are we able to add into schools? Um, you know, quantitatively, what do our kids get? What more do they get? Um, and then of course, you've already talked somewhat about how, um, employees are infected, but I would really like to see some numbers as this process continues. And these aren't things that I want answers for right now, but as the planning continues, as you start to gather data, I would just like that reporting back to us. And those are all my comments. Board members?
I just have a, a brief, brief comment. And I too, uh, am impressed by this, um, plan. And we are all certainly expecting to have equity for all of our children. And this is very exciting. My only question, uh, has to do with, and it's really not a question, but a, um, a plea that how we do, uh, determine where our staff will be. Um, I, I appreciate this, human resources will schedule one-on-ones. Certified educators have first priority for roles in new schools. They can transfer. But I, I hope we do everything we can to keep our folk because it's just, I feel like we need, we need staff. So we don't, we won't know how it falls until it falls, but I, I know that. I think this board feels strongly about the folk who have been with us through the hard times. We want to really affirm them and support them as we continue to move up.
I've got what are two, um, just relatively minor, I, I think, points of clarification that I'm interested in. Um, and first, would like to say thank you, Dr. Green and your staff, for the hard work that you've put into this and the thoughtfulness that has gone into this. It is, um, very evident and, um, this is hard work and a heavy lift. And y'all have done a great job and I appreciate you for that. Um, yeah. Um, the, the two very kind of specific points of clarification, first comes with Van Winkle um, and the statement that it's, um, I, an ideal site given its physical layout at Montessori pods. Does that mean there's some consideration that it might be Montessori in the future? Um, as someone who did have children in Montessori, uh, certainly saw the benefits of that for, for my children at least. That's an anecdote, but still, um, I wondered that when I saw that in writing here. Um, and would be in favor of the possibility, if we have the capacity to do it, of the expansion of Montessori in JPS, because I think it's a really incredible program. The second thing, um, too, came, um, under the proposal for the Teaching and Learning Center, not specifically at Rowan, but, um, the movement of the REAP program to Brown. And Brown is a school that I've spent a lot of time in and care about deeply. And I'm very happy to see that that midtown community will see those buildings used for something there. However, I was also very well aware of the needs in terms of renovations that Brown faced and the physical challenges of that building. And I wonder how we're addressing those and if that's something that's perhaps being broached through the, um, bond projects and the kind of the expanded capacity thanks to that. So those are my two kind of specific questions.
And I believe that, um, uh, Dr. Luckett, that I can address both of those. The first is, um, in what, what we said about the Van Winkle building. It was actually built, um, uh, with Montessori in mind. And so those pods, uh, support the Montessori, um, uh, programming, right? Um, while there, obviously there is the opportunity down the road. We, we haven't envisioned a Montessori program there, but there's so much about Montessori, hands-on learning, um, explore, exploration, um, individual exploration, that sort of thing. Um, very, very, um, uh, individualized learning, all kind of hallmarks of, uh, Montessori, um, education that, that are wholly appropriate for early childhood. And so, um, where we have, um, the Montessori learnings from and practices in Montessori at McWillie, where we've got, um, arts infused education, both at Casey and at Power AIPAC. We've just got wonderful, and, and from several other schools that are just doing amazing, amazing work. We've got wonderful models and practices that we do expect to learn from and pull into, um, this center here. This really should be a premier early childhood center in the city. Uh, so that's what that language is about. It was built for that. Um, we haven't really envisioned doing that. And it's specifically, um, uh, catering towards four-year-olds. And as you know, Montessori is multi-age, uh, in a classroom.
Right.
Um, the, uh, the Brown building, so I had heard as well that there, you know, early on, that there were considerable challenges with the facilities there. There are challenges. Um, and, um, we believe though, that those challenges can be mitigated, um, at least, uh, in the short run to utilize Brown, um, uh, over the next few years or, or what have you. Um, uh, and utilizing some of the bond, um, um, uh, the funding that was, uh, earned on the bond, um, dollars. Um, and so the bond interest, yeah, uh, to support some of the, the work there. And so there's, there's that opportunity. Uh, but yeah, it, uh, as we've looked again at the building, there's some opportunities to address some, um, some issues that were pretty major and didn't make sense to continue at the time. Um, but based on, again, this REAP program, the need for the program and what I believe will be a real build-out of that program as we look at the number of young people who are overaged and undercredited. Um, I think there are some wonderful opportunities for us there.
I'm glad to see the building to be productive in that community.
Yeah. We are as well.
Thank you.
You mentioned, uh, art in the middle schools.
Mm-hmm.
Does that include the arts, uh, all arts?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That, so, uh, I should just go back to the slide. So, uh, we specifically called out health, Spanish, and art as, uh, course offerings that we want to, um, and plan to, um, make consistent, as consistent experiences that our young people have, uh, in our schools. Um, but that's not, um, that's not the, the full list. I'm trying to get back to this earliest slide. Did I?
Yeah.
I passed it. No, here. Right, so the combined, the combined, um, uh, school, the electas would be R, P, E.
Okay, I see you have the music.
ICT, music, band, um, health, and Spanish.
Okay, call on music.
Right, so, so the specific call-out was that what we've seen is that art is not consistently taught in all schools for one reason or another. He- health isn't. Um, Spanish is not. Um, and so that's what that, that was the point we were making there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, I have two follow-up questions that are actually both related, two questions that Ms. Hilliard raised and Dr. Luckett. Um, on, as we think through planning to offer Spanish at the middle school level, are we also thinking through adding capacity in the high schools to receive more students to, um, who are ready for Spanish too?
Yeah. Uh, so we haven't yet built the plan for that, but we're aware that, uh, much like, uh, we're got, we've got the call for, well, what do you do with these folks who've had this, uh, Montessori elementary education? Where do they go? We're, we're very much aware that we've got to have a receiving school, um, for, uh, more advanced, uh, language, foreign language studies. Um, we, we also are aware, and I should just name, that we've got to do some very intentional work, uh, which we've already begun, but very intentional work to find and recruit Spanish teachers. Um, you'll recall that earlier in the year, we, um, we introduced some strategies around international teachers. And so we're very mindful of the fact that, um, that, that too will be a part of the, the work here. We're also very confident that this is right and has to happen.
Thank you. Uh, my second question is directly, maybe comment, uh, things to think about, is directly related to the empty buildings. So, you know, this board was part of the closure of four elementary schools, almost two years ago now. Woodville Heights, Brown, George, and French. And I too was excited to hear that we have a purpose for Brown, but we've still got those other three buildings. Um, when I was in the parent meeting at Pecan Park the other night, among community members there, um, there is a, a deep need, desire, call, whatever you want to classify, however we want to carry it, we've got to figure out something to do with that building. And I just want to, um, ask us, encourage us, call us, charge us to, I don't know if we need to create a task force, but we got to figure out, we, there's so much good stuff going on, but, but that, we got to make sure that we keep this in front of us as well because it's, it's critically important to members of the community. I was, I just want to name that. And then lastly, I too just want to compliment you for just the level of detailed data work that went into this. Um, been in two parent meetings. Your staff has been excellent in both of them. And again, just thank you all for your work and leadership on that front.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? If not, um, we are on, um, Information Action Item. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the board. I present to you for your approval tonight for Information Action, the monthly financial report for the month ended November thirtieth, tw- two thousand nineteen. Um, this report is presented to you every month. It contains your statement of fund balance, your budget status report, the, um, report of our bank reconciliations, and also our cash flow, uh, report for this month, for November. Um, I'd like to, to make just one note, and we've talked about this during the budget process, that we were, uh, watching very closely, of course, Avalorum collections. And wanted to just make a note and signal that at November of twenty eighteen, our Avalorum collections in district maintenance were about five point four million. As of November of twenty nineteen, we, um, have collected about seven point two million. So, uh, some of the increase that we talked about with the increase in, um, mileage rates and the, um, Avalorum increase that we saw, the growth in the, as a school district this year, we see this coming to fruition in, um, in district maintenance. So, um, we're hopeful that that continues, that trend continues. Um, and so I just wanted to signal that as one of the, the notable aspects. Of course, we will continue to monitor Avalorum collections as we go into Avalorum season, which will be, uh, January, February, March.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Being no questions, there is a motion to approve the monthly financial report for the month ended November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Um, Dr. Luckett moved. Um, Ms. Hilliard seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Finance. All of the Consent Agenda items have been reviewed by the board and we have had the opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any items, um, which need to be pulled for further discussion? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items Finance?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Um, Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved unanimously. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda General. Um, we've also had an opportunity to review these items. Is there any other, any further need for discussion? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda General?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Luckett, seconded by Mr. Figures. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda Personnel. We've also had an opportunity to review these items. Is there any need for further discussion? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Personnel?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Hilliard, seconded by Dr. Seaback. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved unanimously. Is there consideration to hold an executive session? There is not. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second.
So it's been moved by Dr. Harrison.
Seconded and third.
Seconded and third. Uh, I don't know who seconded.
Ms. Hilliard.
Ms. Hilliard, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion is approved and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.